All this meeting to order, August 6, 2012. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get going on the agenda, I ask Chief Bradley if he could please come forward and if you could give us an update, kind of fill us in on what's happened over the last week. I know you and your folks and your counterparts have been very busy, so if you could please give us an update.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. As you're well aware, the Stillwater Fire Department, along with all the surrounding communities and the fire departments and emergency operations centers across the state, has been extremely busy in the last seven days fighting wildfires, given the temperatures and the dry, the humidity conditions that we've suffered. Along with that, Mayor Fallon, excuse me, Governor Fallon, last week declared a statewide ban on all outdoor burning. That in itself has helped a little bit. During the last seven days, the Stillwater Fire Department has responded to three major incidents within our response area. Wooton Lane Fire, Fairgrounds Fire, which occurred on Monday of last week, it burned approximately 900 acres, was at three miles in length and a mile across, extended from 177, Highway 51, north to Richmond Road, on both sides of Fairgrounds Road. In addition to that, there were six mobile homes lost and three outbuildings, as well as some vehicles. That fire included response agencies surrounding our jurisdiction, which included Glencoe, Ingalls, Ripley, Perkins, as well as all of Stillwater. Additionally, we had the Glencoe Fire, that burned approximately 6,000 acres and touched 35 sections of land, covering five mile swath wide, up to seven miles in length. The third fire that we had was at 32nd and Union, and it was approximately 200 acres in size. We lost two abandoned mobile homes, and that was supported by Oklahoma State University. We had an air tanker there as well, as well as our mutual aid departments. In the last seven days, the preliminary estimate for the Stillwater Fire Department is we've expended $35,000 in overtime that we did not anticipate spending, and we've used two months' worth of fuel for the rural fire budget. In addition to that, we've burned a total or have touched 7,600 acres of land, and there has been 18 homes lost through these three fires that we've responded to. I can't say enough for the mutual aid and the support that we've received by the community and our mutual aid partners, that include Stillwater Medical Center, Life Net, Oklahoma State University, and all the surrounding volunteer departments. Stillwater was very fortunate in supporting the Glencoe Fire to have response strike teams from as far away as Enid and Tonka Law. What was unique about the fire on Friday and Saturday morning was there were no assets left to respond to that fire in the state of Oklahoma. With all the fires going on across the state, we had everything that we had, and there was nothing left to have. So I commend the volunteer departments, Glencoe Fire Department, whose response area it was in, for doing such a fine job in making a stand on that fire and saving as much property as they've saved. Now that the fire is out and things have calmed down, we'll go back and do a complete study on it to see exactly what the total loss was, but more importantly, what was the total value saved for the property that was out there. With that being said, it's important to note that the loss of this property will continue to cause hardship for the affected people for many, for some time, and our deepest sympathies extended to those who have suffered in this tragic event. Are there any questions, sir?
I don't think so. Thank you very much to all the people in your department and everyone that's worked with you in this, great debt of gratitude to your department and the other agencies that have worked with you. And you'd actually, you told me when we were talking earlier, you had talked about the non-governmental agencies. Could you fill us in a little bit on that?
Real briefly, we work with the Red Cross and also with the Salvation Army and some of the church groups in town. The overwhelming support of people bringing out water and Gatorade and things like that has been huge, so huge that we probably have a two-year stock of that. If the community feels the urge to make a donation, I would encourage them to make a donation to one of the rural volunteer fire departments in the form of cash or something that will help them along. They operate on a very limited budget, and their support is truly appreciated and needed by this community.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I got a report from an OSU employee who lives over in that area, speaking of the volunteer firemen. She said the only thing that kept her house from burning down was one volunteer fireman with a hose. Fire burned all around her house, but he stayed there until it was, the hazard was gone.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think that stories, we're here, many of those, and we're very fortunate to have the dedication from people that are there for us in the time of need, so thank you for sharing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It's going to take us down to approval of minutes. We've got regular meeting July 16, executive session July 16, special meeting July 30, and executive session July 30, all in 2012. Motion on these minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that to be approved. Second?
A motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by Counselor Pena. And that motion passes four in favor with Counselor Scott abstaining. It takes us down to consent docket, three items on the consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
Not at this time, no.
Not, is there a motion on the consent docket?
Move approval.
Second. A motion by Counselor Weaver and a second by Counselor Scott. And that passes five to zero. That'll take us down to public, we don't, Patty, we didn't have any, we have one for...
We have seven. They're all for public hearing.
They're all for public hearing, that's what I wanted to confirm. Okay. Okay, which takes us down to the public hearings. Our first item on public hearings was a motion to reconsider a request for MAP amendment for property located in the 1200 block of North Ramsey Street. Was it June 18?
Yes, sir.
The June, that middle June meeting, Counselor Scott at that meeting had made the motion to, motion to reconsider?
Yes, sir.
And it was seconded, so procedurally, we are...
Voting on the motion to reconsider.
That's the stage we're at, is we have a motion and a second to reconsider the decision that was made that night.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Counselor Scott, it was your motion to reconsider.
Yes, sir. I would move to reconsider that decision.
The motion's already been made, is it...
Is it going to be removed from the table?
Excuse me?
We tabled it, didn't we?
We need a motion to remove it from the table.
Not real, well, you didn't actually table it, you just simply deferred it till tonight, so if you wanted, I mean, procedurally, you don't have to make that motion.
Counselor Scott, you had made the motion, is there anything you'd like to speak of in favor of that motion?
Well, I would just like to, I would like to be able to visit it again, just because unfortunately, I did not notice its proximity to the Athletic Village, and that definitely would have had bearing on my decision if I had looked at my map a little bit farther out.
Any other discussion you guys like to have on this motion to reconsider? You all ready to vote on the motion to reconsider?
Certainly.
Ready to vote? The motion to reconsider does pass three to two, so we shall reconsider this matter. It is set up for public hearing. We don't, staff is available, four questions. We notice on this, what...
Yes, sir.
We got good notice on the public hearing, okay. We've got two, I think it's, we have two people signed up to speak in favor of the application. Mr. Ghost, do you want to speak first?
Roger Ghost, 113 East State. Basically here to answer any questions and understand why it's been, I guess, up to reconsideration. Nothing's changed, we still request the RTM zoning, and be glad to answer any questions if you can.
Any questions for Mr. Ghost?
Not at this time, sir.
Mr. Hester, do you want to, would you like to speak, Mr. Hester?
My name is Brian Hester, 84 graduate, Oklahoma State. My wife's a graduate. My daughters live at 1205 Ramsey, just next door to where these two properties I purchased from, the Stillwater Public Schools. I don't know what to say, except that all we're trying to do is build something nice so that we can send some kids. My wife's a teacher in Broken Arrow, and we have a constant flow of possibility of nice kids that need a place to stay, and I guess they're tearing down Kord Drummond. And in the future, there's not going to be a place for upper-division kids as much as there is now on campus, and we're just wanting to invest in Stillwater. We love the town, we're season ticket holders, we just love everything about Stillwater, and we're not trying to do anything sneaky or underhanded, we just want to build some really nice homes, properties, duplexes, so that we can kind of keep a stream of kids coming through here and maybe have some retirement income, because just like everybody else's 401Ks, it ain't happening. So we're trying to take some of our retirement into our own hands and possibly build some nice places. Other than that, if you have any questions.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have multiple people to speak against the application. Janita Cormel.
I did not bring the baby, since it was noted that it was unfair last time. I did bring pictures, though. Janita Cormel, 1221 North Ramsey. I just wanted to, I've, you know, you guys have heard my piece before, I just wanted to also point out that it is a single-family zone, that's why we built there, that's why my neighbor, who also signed up to speak, built there. We have two small children that we don't want near a large, or even a small apartment building, and the facts are with the RTM, you can't tell them, even if they want to build a duplex, there's no guarantee of that, because no one can say what they build once it's rezoned. And I also want to point out that the people right next to us that have gone along with the petition to rezone or the application to rezone, they built a house specifically for college rental, yet they still built it in the single-family style, and we're not trying to make, you know, his 401K not happen, we're not trying to make sure that he can't build anything for profit, we just want him to conform to the single-family standards that everyone else in the neighborhood has already done when they built their house. I'm also concerned with, that this, this whole city has entrusted the school board with these multimillion-dollar school projects, which one of them is, you know, just right across the street from where this potential apartment building would be, and I think that we should, we should keep on with that faith with our school board, as everyone had voted for that, those schools to be built, and really hear what the superintendent has to say, I know she's going to speak, but I think it's, you know, it's obviously very important to consider what the school board thinks is right for that, for that section of land. Thank you.
Next of having signed up would be Dr. Kane.
I'm back. I hope this doesn't become a monthly occurrence, even though it's nice to talk to all of you, and it was good to learn tonight why we were back again, because I really wasn't sure why it was coming back up again. I checked the website and couldn't figure out why it was coming, so I appreciate Cody's explanation on that. As you know, $21 million invested in a brand-new school that's going up as we speak, really trying to keep neighborhood schools, neighborhood schools. You know that my husband and I have raised two children, put them through OSU, we love college kids, but there's no, like Janita was talking to you about, how do you define a unit? How many people can go in a unit? And so when you, he's already had the two lots that we sold him, and our intent at that time was he was going to do duplexes, that's what our realtor was told by his realtor, but then now you get the other two lots, tear them all down, just how many units can go on those four plots, we don't know. And so the notion that we have now expanded Will Rogers' capacity to 600 students, so we were adding 100 to 150 bodies, plus their families, and then if this motion is to come back and revote it on and go a different way, then you're going to have this huge influx of college students right there on this street that I really don't call a street, it's like a dead end, and that's a large number of people in a small area. I just think that's crazy. As you know, I spoke to you last year on the Westwood overlay. That was an amazing decision, that helped keep Westwood a neighborhood that isn't out of control. And so all I'm asking is that you think about the investment that Stillwater Public Schools is making in our community, in this neighborhood. I get what you're saying about the athletic complex going up right there, but as you know, there are other places besides, right across the street from a $21 million, 600-student school. So I would just ask that you hold firm to your previous vote. Thank you.
Pat Akers.
I'm Pat Akers. I live at 708 West Eskridge, which is, my backyard backs up to the lots that he has bought. I just want to say that I'm, we moved our house from another location about 15 years ago because there were apartments next door. So we moved there because it is a, I'm basically facing into the park, so it's a quiet, was a quieter neighborhood. As you know, we also have undergone changes in the last couple of years because eminent domain is across the street from us, so all the houses, most of them are a few rentals left on that one side, but most of the single-family housing is gone from our neighborhood. So we're left in a little pocket of single-family, you know, very few of us left there to oppose this, and the reason is really, like they've already stated, that there's going to be a lot of people living in a small space, and that, that affects noise levels, it affects the parking, and they've already indicated how much, right now, with the construction going up and down that little street, you add another number of apartments, which she brought up, we don't know how many apartments or individual houses or duplexes that would be, so we don't really know the number of people that would be in that small space, but you add, you're going to probably plan for each one of them to have a car, and whether they can get even all of those people onto off-street parking, there would be no room in the street for them, and if you add to them the, you know, and college students are very friendly and have people over, and so we're just thinking of the number of guests that might be in that. So it's adding a lot of people to a very small area, so I'm opposing that for that reason.
Leave this roll. Yes, signed up for the public hearing, so we will close the public hearing. I do have a couple of questions for staff, I don't know who I'm, could you put the map up?
Paula Dennis in Development Services, what you have before you in the hatched area are the lots that have been asked by Mr. Hester and another property owner to be rezoned to the multifamily residential. The yellow around it is currently zoned, small lot, single-family residential, the blue is going to be the public zoning, and we adjusted our map from the previous meeting a little bit to help it be a little more concise. On the south side of Eskridge is the Athletic Village area. And I'll be happy to answer any questions or point out anything that you may have.
What, just to refresh everyone's memory, this went through the normal process, it obviously went through Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
What was the decision of Planning Commission, or what was their recommendation to City Council?
Planning Commission's recommendation was to recommend RT, which is the two-family zoning district. The request, when it came in, was RM multifamily. At the time, this was prior to our breaking out of that one multifamily zone into the four that we currently have, so the only lesser zone that the Planning Commission had an option of would be the RT zoning district, and that's why, that is their recommendation.
What's the, didn't, a lot of conversations about density in there, comments. Just flipping through, 20 units per acre of the gross density.
Yes, if, if there is any consideration for anything more dense than what the Planning Commission recommended, the RT, I've taken the liberty of putting up on the screen, as you can see, our two new lowest-dense multifamily zoning districts. One of those, the RTM, which is two-family and multifamily, a maximum of 20 units per acre, and then the RMI, which is the multifamily intermediate, just what it says, has a maximum of 30 units per acre. All of these lots combined, they're approximately 74, 7500 square foot each, so they're coming in right at an acre almost, if not a little shy. So whatever the density allowance is for about an acre, keeping in mind that in order to establish that use on the property at that density, there's also parking requirements, there's landscaping requirements, there's possibility of easement for utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the maximum number of units that could be put on that property, even though it may be zoned, something that allows 20, in reality, it may not come in all the way up to 20 units per acre.
Do you have any other questions for, for staff?
I have one question. I'm hearing that the school used Ramsey Street as an exit from the school. Am I right about that?
Ramsey, Ramsey Street, and it's a little hard to see on the map, but half of it's blue and half of it's yellow. It is the, the dead end in between the public zoning and the RSS that's shown on the map here. That is to be utilized for access when the new school, the new Will Rogers Elementary School, is occupied. They do have access off of Washington, which is off of the map over here on the west side, and they have access off of Ramsey. That will be, if I recall correctly, and I don't have the site plan up here in front of me, but I believe that will be bus as well as passenger vehicle traffic.
Any other questions? Planning Commission made a recommendation for RTM?
RT.
RT.
RT, yes. RTM was not in effect at the time. Yes, sir.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Approve Planning Commission's recommendation?
The petition was requested.
I believe he requested...
RM.
Or RTM.
The request, the request on paper was actually for RM. As Mr. Ghost indicated when he was up here just a moment ago, RTM, they have modified their request for, so that's...
I said RTM.
Thank you.
I have a question, and that's to the attorney. Is that possible to vote on that now, or do we have to go back in the process where it was at one time? RT or something now is switched because we did a change? What is that, how does that work?
The original request, RM, was more dense, and so you can take the highest use, which would be the RM, or anything below it, and RTM, RMI, and even the old RT all fall into that category. So to answer your question, yes, you could consider RTM.
And it's not a legal issue at this point because...
No, sir, it's because it's lesser, it's, it's less than what they asked for originally.
Understood.
Procedurally, just so we're all on the same page, Planning Commission recommended RT.
Yes, sir.
Applicant is asking for RTM.
Yes, sir.
What was your motion?
RTM.
With a gross density of...
Counselor Weaver's made a motion for RTM. Did you second RTM, Counselor Scott?
I second his motion for RTM.
Okay. Any further discussion? Voting on the motion to approve RTM is the motion that's been seconded. That motion passes three to two, RTM.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public hearing, receive public comment regarding the adoption of the 2012 zoning map, CC 12-73.
Good evening, Patty Evans, Development Services. On May 21, 2012, this body approved and adopted a text amendment to the Land Development Code to make changes to the multifamily zoning district. Ordinance 3180 eliminates the RM, the multifamily residential zoning district, and adds the four multifamily districts, RTM, two-family and multifamily, RMI, multifamily intermediate, RMU, multifamily urban, and HR, high-rise. Now that the ordinance is in effect, a zoning map that reflects those changes in the multifamily zoning needs to be approved and adopted. This, these are the zoning classifications that incorporates the four new multifamily categories, starting right here, RTM, down to high-rise. The largest concentration of the multifamily zoning is shown here, south and east of the campus area. There are, it's very spotted around the city, but this is the most concentrated area. A text, findings include a text amendment to the Land Development Code eliminating the RM zoning district and adding four multifamily districts was approved and adopted May 21, 2012, and a revised zoning map that visually reflects the approved text amendment is proposed. Are there any questions?
Not at this time. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, actually, I forgot to ask, do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, good. Sorry, I forgot to ask.
I think the map was on the rotunda.
Okay. We'll be back. Okay, we did have two people that wished to speak in connection with this. The first is Jamie Murray. Kelly Harris?
Good evening, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. I'm gonna switch out of here. I just want to be clear for the record, I am up here to speak in favor of this motion. Never going to go against planning. But they have worked really hard and they've gone with a solution that makes sense to them. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of our developments that we've currently got under design caught in the crosshairs here, where they were previously zoned RM, and due to the existing structures that were located on the property, they were taken down to RTM, which is the lowest intensity RM zone. So, the first one I want to talk to you about tonight, you've actually seen a couple times, can we, there it goes. This is located at Fourth, is along the north here, and Blakely is the street here. We've been here a couple times, closing different portions of this alleyway here. We've been, as the owner has been buying more and more property, we've been closing the alleys so that we can allow for more building, buildable area. And the density that we have on there proposed is 28 units per acre. It's just a half-acre lot, so that comes out to 28 units per acre, which we would need the RMI zoning district, which is just the step above the RTM. RMI is actually located on the north side of Fourth Avenue there. As you go across on the north side, that's all RMI. So, it would still fit in with what's surrounding, and we feel that this would be an easy transition. With the previous RM zoning, we are allowed 25 units per acre. With an SUP, we could have gone to 40 units per acre, so our current design would have worked in the RM zone. But we're just asking for you to go ahead and consider in with this map amendment, this change to take into that. I also have one other property, but I'm, I'll see if Jamie wants to speak, or I can answer any questions.
Mr. Murray, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, Council. I am a graduate of Will Rogers, I'm not here to speak about that, but I was a graduate a long time ago from a Rogers Elementary School. My, we've been working on this project for some time. We have closed the, we're on, on track in District Court to actually officially close the alley that's been abandoned for decades behind one of these properties. And we're prepared to go forth. We are not building a high-rise. It's a, it's a two-story, it's 16 units. I believe it's going to be a desirable location. Across the street and a little farther south on Blakely, there, I don't know if you've noticed that, there's been some development there, some, I think Keith Harris and Harold Sarah built some apartments there with some along that street. So, the, it's an older neighborhood, and the houses are becoming to a point where they're not as desirable, and they're getting kind of run down. And so, we believe this is going to enhance the value of all property around. If you know, the Kappa House across the street has a big parking lot there. We're going to have adequate parking. We've been working real hard with the site plan, we're prepared to, to file all that. Growing up in Stillwater, that's all I knew was RM, so when I found out that there's no more RM, I was kind of shocked, and so, we, we were here to request a modification of the map overlay to RMI, so we can proceed ahead. And I believe the, the addresses, the physical address, one of them is the Cecil Maynard House that burnt down several years ago. It's 1301 West Fourth, and then it's 406 and 408 South Blakely, and those are the-
What's on the south side of the property?
Yes. And, and so, we believe that it's an equitable solution to this situation we have, and we'd request that the Council grant the modification, or exception, or whatever the proper term of art is in this regards.
What was on the north side of the property?
North side is the Kappa House and the Kiffin House parking lot. And then you go right into the Greek world from there on north for some time. And, so-
Any questions for Mr. Murray?
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, you said you had another property that-
Do we need to vote on these individually, or is this all in one?
I believe, how, the question's going to be to adopt the map revision, and we could further revise it at that time?
Actually, you don't have an ordinance to vote on tonight, so you'll be just giving us direction as to how you want that ordinance to look. So, if you want these revisions included, you direct us to include those, we put that in the text of the ordinance, and you actually vote on it on the 20th.
Okay.
All right. This is a, an aerial photo of, of Jamie's property. Shows that parking lot on the north side of Fourth, going right into fraternities and sororities. His property is, this vacant tract here, and then he's got two houses. It might be off the street. The old house is still there, so he, he has this large one, and then the, the two south there are the three tracts. The other tract of land is over, still along Fourth, we've just gone to the east a bit, between Hester and Ramsey. So, again, Fourth is kind of in the middle of your screen again. Ramsey is on this side, and Hester is over here. If you'll recall, we, we've just gone through, and this is that high-rise apartment building with the attached parking garage right here, Catty Corner, and then the OSU gravel parking lot, future home of the Performing Arts Center, I believe, is directly north here. The tract of land we're talking about is kind of a hodgepodge of properties in here. If you'll follow my cursor, we're going to go around probably, I don't know, eight different properties here. My cursor went away. So, this is kind of the northeast corner, and then we go around down to this property line, middle, middle of the block, over, all the way over to Hester, up, and then back into the, that corner. So, this property has been in a long time coming. You haven't actually seen it before, your Council, any for zoning changes or anything yet. We've been working on the property boundary, it was very tricky to sort out all of those property lines. And then they've gone into pre-design, seeing how many units they can fit in there. They have been listed as R, RMI with the new map. They are requesting you to consider the high-rise district tonight. This would allow, they, they are proposing 73 units under their current design. They have 1.62 acres in that big group of properties. I'm sorry, that's not how many is, that, that would be 73 units per acre, that would be the density, which would require the high-rise district. The high-rise district was given to, again, the, the apartment, just Catty Corner, and then also just half a block east and west is the CB zoning, which allows buildings to be built to the property line. So, we do feel that this is an adequate fit into the neighborhood, so we'll ask for you to consider that in your motion tonight. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Two separate properties.
Two different property owners. Okay. Okay. Those are all the requests that we've had, so I'm going to close public hearing, ask staff to come back up, and I have a feeling we have some questions.
At their regular meeting on July 17th, 2012, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the revised zoning map with the condition that the zoning on 1900 North Washington be changed from RTM to family and multifamily to RMI, multifamily intermediate. We did have somebody that requested that, just like Kelly did tonight, requested that from the Planning Commission.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for staff?
I assume that with that district on the Fourth Street property, we would be diligent to make sure we're taking care of the sidewalks and the, we described that as a pedestrian-friendly area that we're trying to develop. We'll maintain the sidewalks and have that whole discussion as we did with the other high-rise projects.
Right. I know, you're looking, and she's over there shaking her head, ain't she?
Which Fourth Street property were you asking about?
I'm talking about the-
Fourth and Hester?
The Ramsey and Hester.
Ramsey and Hester.
Right. That property at Ramsey and Hester on Fourth, we have had a pre-app meeting with the developer, and we are rather excited about it because what he is proposing goes along with our redevelopment area plan.
It does.
Yeah. The, the building that's going front onto Fourth, he's proposing retail in the bottom-
Awesome.
And, and mixed-use residence at, on the second floor. So, yeah, we're kind of excited that he's going to start the trend for that redevelopment area.
It looks like of all the properties zoned RM, it looks like three people have come forward and said, "We want to make a tweak."
Right.
On each of those three, has staff had a chance to look at it? I mean, that's, it's one of those, we're kind of getting hit out of the blue on a change. Staff said, "Here's what we think's appropriate, someone's asking for something different."
Right.
Has staff had a chance to review, and were there any different recommendation?
Let's take Jamie's property first.
Fourth and Blakely, we'll talk about that.
Fourth and Blakely. Like he said, there is RMI just across the street to the north of it. The rest of that block is RTM, I believe. But he does have several lots there that he's cha- requested changing, so it's not really spot zoning. It's just kind of creeping down. The one on Hester and Ramsey fits right in with our redevelopment plan. It is a little higher density than we have planned for that area, but it, it looks like a good development, and I think it would be a good use.
In May, we approved staff recommendation of what zoning that you wanted. Now, we're back changing the zone, or asking for zoning to be changed again. Is that correct? The Planning Commission looked at all the redevelopment. We made a motion to accept it, zones, and tonight, we're changing the zones.
Well, yes.
We're asked to change zones.
Back in May, you accepted and approved and adopted the text amendment that changed the code. Tonight, you're, you, I'm asking you to accept and approve the zoning map, the visual that will go along with that text amendment.
So, we have never voted on the amendments of what the zones ought to be, just the different zones that we had in, in a particular area. I'm getting myself straight, so don't worry.
Well, what we did, I'm sorry, John, you want to-
You're actually applying the zones to property. You've, you've approved the text, now you're taking the text and actually applying it to the various properties within the city.
And this is the first time we've done that.
Yes, sir, this, this is the first time that's happened.
It's our first time to color in with these colors.
So, we haven't seen anything before. No, sir, this is the first time you've seen this.
And Planning Commission has seen it?
Yes. Yes, they made the recommendation to approve it with that one condition.
With which approval?
19th in Washington.
Yeah, 1900 North Washington.
Okay.
Because when, we had to come up with some way to change RM zoning to four different zoning districts.
I don't have any problem with that.
And so, we did it by density. It's the only thing that really made sense. This property at 1900 North Washington, by density, by the addresses that were there, fit in the RTM zoning district. But Mr. Beer would like, like it, he's, he has plans to redevelop it, and he was requesting the RMI.
Mr. Mayor, I think the staff did a pretty good job, just considering we have only these few suggested tweaks to what they laid out. Suggests they did a good job.
After this is accepted and adopted, then people will have to do their map amendments to change their zoning. This is just kind of tweaking it as we do it.
And along those lines, two of the three requests only went up one step.
Right.
So-
Yeah.
I think it's just discretionary, when you're, you know, the, the existing zoning no longer exists, so you have to best fit one of the new zones, and I think there's, you know, it could go to one of two or three possibly. And so, I think those that are questionable either way, I think now that we know what the, the future uses are, then that, that tends to be the factor that's coming in.
So, any other questions of staff on this, these map revisions? Coloring in with new colors.
Exciting stuff, sir.
There is a question I do have.
Okay.
From RMI to HR, we're talking about mass gross density from 50 to 150. There's no middle ground in there at all?
No. The high-rise can go up to like 150 units per, per acre.
And the request, if I've got this right, is for RMU at the, what, North Washington?
No, it's up to RMI.
RMI.
Yeah, from RTM to RMI.
Thirty units per-
RMI is 30 units per acre.
So, Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend City Council approve revised zoning map with the one change of 1900 North Washington to RMI. Tonight, we've had two other requests. If the motion, if someone wanted to make a motion to adopt Planning Commission's recommendation with those two additional changes, how would that be worded?
Just the way you worded it.
You just did it.
You're good, because I will know what you're, because I'll actually have to bring the ordinance back, and I will know what you're, what you're referencing in that regard. So, are the two requests that came after Planning Commission, was it just a matter of them not being able to make that deadline, and the timing is such that they're just coming to us first, I mean, coming to us after?
Just one more.
I think so.
If we're going, that's, we got two tonight, which, okay. But how about the rest of the area? When we're going to do the zoning, or we're going to look to do the rest of the area? Kelly drew a, kind of a strange line around that one section. What's, so next time somebody wants a high-rise, we're going to come in and rezone it again?
Yeah, they'll have to come in and do a map amendment. It just so happened that these properties that Kelly identified tonight already have plans, you know, they've already started planning it and know what the density is going to be, and it doesn't fit into what staff assigned to those properties.
I think coming from Vice Mayor, are you suggesting that we go ahead and bump the high-rise to fill that block?
That'd make more sense to me. What, what good is doing us to go through and do this?
I mean, it's-
For people to know at one at a time what they got to come in and request. If the area is satisfactory to be rezoned to high-rise, then let's do it. I'm not taking a position, but let's do it, if that's what it takes.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think them, won't the map give us, you know, target areas for-
Yes.
Once we approve it, then developers can see where the high-rise is- Once we approve it, then developers can see where the high-rise is, where the R T, R M I is, and they can, you know, acquire those properties and develop?
Yes.
That's their one-at-a-time zoning.
I, I would like...
A one-of-a-time adjustment, just like we do today when someone wants to change something. There's nothing different about that.
We were trying to get around to that.
But I would hope, I would, like you say, Chuck, I would agree that once we approve this, it should lessen the need to make those one-time.
That's where I'm trying to get at, I understand.
I will just make one caution before we go picking properties, completing areas of blocks or half-blocks or anything like that. For instance, the high-rise zoning district, assigning that to the four properties at this corner that were not included in Kelly's little polygon that she drew, would restrict them from being able to put in single-family houses that are obviously out there on the property, would restrict them from being able to put in duplexes that they may have plans for, and they are not here asking for that to occur, such as Kelly and Mr. Murray and the other person at the Planning Commission are. This is simply an application of our new zoning districts in some logical form to our current zoning map that we are required to adopt, and from that, any individual, once they have plans, it takes it out of being staff's, Planning Commission's, or council decision of when to zone property, it's the applicant coming in and making those requests.
Had those other property owners joined in the request, then it would have made some...
Yes, sir.
But without their concurrence, it's a little difficult.
All right, any other questions of staff?
Not this time, sir.
Okay, what's the motion? It depends on what you want to have accomplished. I, I ask what a proper motion would be to, if we want to adopt Planning Commission's recommendation with the change of 1900 North Washington, what we've identified at the Fourth and...
Blakely.
Blakely property, and then the Fourth and Hester properties also changed, as discussed tonight.
So moved.
There was a motion for that. Sir?
That went right over my head.
Do you want me to say that again?
Please.
Okay, the motion, I'm going to second it, but the motion and the second that's been made...
Very good.
Is, staff came up with the map.
I'll write it.
Planning Commission approved it and recommends the City Council to approve with three changes from what staff came up with. 1900 North Washington, Fourth and Hester, Fourth and Blakely. Questions? Discussion?
Sounds like a great idea.
Move the question.
Let's vote. That passes four, zero, and one with Counselor Pena abstaining. Okay. Next on the agenda. I can get to the right agenda here. Go down to general orders. First is adoption of updates and amendments to 2009 International Building Code, residential code, fire code, plumbing code, fuel, gas code. Why am I reading this? Why aren't you reading this?
I was about to point that out, sir.
It's not a title.
Ah! Item A under general orders.
Building official, Mr. Roberts.
Hey, hello.
Hi. Mike Roberts, Development Services. This past year, the state of Oklahoma, the, adopted, or passed legislation that adopted model construction codes for enactment across the state, and part of that requirement was that local jurisdictions that adopt building codes have to adopt codes that are homogeneous with the codes adopted by the state. This, these updates to the code that we're bringing to you will bring our local code adoptions into compliance with state statutes. The state also reviewed these codes and made some amendments to some of the codes. The Building Trades Board, for over a year, has been reviewing the proposed amendments by the state and has reviewed those for impact on our community, and with stakeholder input, has reviewed the amendments and then reviewed some other local amendments that we felt were appropriate for our community, and then have adopted these proposed amendments to our local codes that we forwarded to you. The Planning Commission reviewed the Building Trades Board's recommendations last month. They also agreed to forward those to you with their recommendation, and so that's what we're here for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, staff.
I notice there's not an ordinance on here about this.
That is correct.
Okay, so what are you asking for us tonight on this?
If you want to go forward with the adoption of these codes, then you would direct us to bring back an ordinance at the next City Council meeting, bringing these codes forward for your consideration.
So like a motion and a vote, or just a...
Bring them back to us. You don't actually have to do a formal motion on this, but...
Okay. Does anybody have any problem with them bringing in an ordinance for us to review?
Do it.
Okay, bring us an ordinance, and we'll check it out. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, next on our general orders, fourth quarter financial review.
Good evening, Marcy Alexander, CFO. This is the fourth quarter report for fiscal year 11-12, which I realize has been over for a while. This is not the final audited financial reports, just the interim, so there will be changes that you'll see to these numbers in the final report. The auditors have already come in and done a week, a little over a week of their interim work. They'll be back the week after Labor Day and continue on, and we'll have the S U A report sometime in October and the city's report sometime in December. But just to report on the interim reports, most of the amendments and targets, projections that we changed and looked at during budget time held through, and our revenues came in fairly well as projected. The main exception of that was the use tax and the general fund, and in looking at that, we've got some questions posed to the Tax Commission because most of the decrease in that revenue source came from building materials and materials used by trade contractors, HVAC, electrical, and, and those types of materials. And as we all know, we have quite a bit of building going on that we know materials have been delivered in from outside the community, so we're checking on that. The other revenues, S U A, they're upsidey. I think a lot of that's due to some seasonal hot weather at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then also again at the end of the fiscal year. All of our expenditure projections, our expenditure, actual expenditures are under what our expenditures were, and so there's really no anomalies in the numbers. So, turn it over to you if you all have any questions at this point.
Really, everything was played out like budgeted and anticipated?
Everything looks as, as, as expected, and, and you all have already this year voted to carry forward some of the unexpended and incomplete projects at, at year-end.
Very encouraged by the way the year ended, and I think it's, it's good signs, and the, which we'll hear next time, July sales tax up from last year, so I think that we're seeing some good indicators that things are improving.
Any other questions from Ms. Alexander? Thank you. We do have one resolution, Resolution CC 2012-9, Resolution Establishing Fees for Non-Parking Permits, On-Street Parking, Westwood Neighborhood Parking District.
You'll recall several months ago, last fall, the council did establish a parking assessment district for the Westwood area, general of the Westwood area, it does include Admiral. The Assessment District ordinance specified that priority for the parking would be to the property owners within the district, and provided for development of a parking permit system. This resolution is, staff has worked on this, has worked with our parking consultant as well. Mr. McClanny has worked extensively, has met with several people from the Homeowners Association who've had questions. I think we've addressed those. This proposal is that each property within the Westwood District will have the option of paying a $40 assessment fee, and upon paying that $40 assessment fee, they may purchase annual parking permits at $5 each. Each property may purchase one or two parking permits. Those will be annual. The fee will be $5 per year thereafter. The $40 is a one-time fee for the cost of establishing the system. The assessment, if a property is to change owners, the new owner would be required to pay the one-time $40 membership as a new owner to establish their eligibility for one or two parking permits.
But it is optional.
It is optional, it's not mandatory that they purchase these. The resolution also includes a fee if one of your permits is lost or destroyed and you want to replace it, there'll be a $10 replacement fee. We would recommend approval to this resolution. Do you have any questions?
And since this is a resolution, this is something that could be adjusted as needed.
That, that's correct. It could be. We have already established the parking areas in the Westwood District earlier when we designated no parking areas. The, the parking permits will entitle the permit holder to park in any parking available, legal parking area within the district. Without a permit, it'll be a violation to park anywhere within the district, on the street.
Any questions?
We talked, or at least you said that the owner can buy these, right?
Yes, the property owner.
Okay, the situation may arise that a property owner is outside of the district. Let's say he's in Colorado, but he's giving it, he's giving his property over to a realty agency. Does the realty agency work in his behalf at that point, or is these things...
It would, it would have to be, it would have to be a recorded request on behalf of the owner. If a property owner pays their $40 fee and purchases one or two permits, those permits can be displayed on any vehicle of the owner's choice. His vehicle, his cousin's vehicle is visiting, or a tenant's vehicle. There will be a mirror-type hanger, and it could be transferred from vehicle to vehicle. The control is just the number of permits. But yes, an absentee owner can have someone purchase them on their behalf, and they can use those permits as they choose.
Any other questions? Or motion on Resolution 2012-9?
I move adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Counselor Pena. And that passes five to zero, and that takes us down to ordinances. Before we jump into the ordinances, just kind of reminder to the group up here, these all are coming out of our June 18 meeting, where we were talking about the different boards and how to help some of the boards work better, do better, and so these were the resulting ordinances. Is that a fair way to describe that?
That's correct.
Okay.
These ordinances are a reflection of the council's direction at that meeting, yeah.
I'd also like to point out that at that June 18 meeting, we asked for these to be back on the August 6 agenda, so thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Dorman had to prepare these, so I'll defer that thanks to, we reminded each other.
Good teamwork. Okay, so anyway, Mr. Dorman, ordinances.
Ordinance number 3187, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code, amending Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 2, Building Trades Board, Section 10-22, Members, and Section 10-24, Expedited Amendment, excuse me, Administrative Appeal Procedure.
Any questions on this ordinance? Is there a motion on this ordinance?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Weaver. That passes five to zero. Next ordinance.
Ordinance number 3188, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code, amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 2, Administration, Division 2, Boards, Commissions, and Groups, Regarding the Planning Commission, Section 23-25, Membership, and Section 23-27, Quorum and Voting.
Questions?
Change of the membership of the Planning Commission from five to seven members.
Questions on this ordinance?
I would move approval, ordinance 3188, second.
Motion by Counselor Weaver, second by the Vice Mayor. And that passes five to zero. Ordinance 3189?
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Authorities, Boards, Committees, Commissions, Trusts, Division 6, Excessively Advisory Board, Section 2-271, comma, Meetings.
Questions on 3189?
As, as a reminder, that changes the mandatory meetings to one annual, and then they can meet as special meetings as needed, relieving them of the mandatory sequence of meetings.
Motion?
Move we adopt ordinance 3189, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Counselor Pena. And that passes five to zero, and our last ordinance of the evening.
Ordinance number 3190, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code, amending Commissions' Trusts to dissolve and repeal in its entirety, Division 8, Stillwater Wellness Committee, Sections 2-323 to 2-330.
Questions on this one? Motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Scott, second by the Vice Mayor. And that passes four to one with Counselor Weaver voting no. Okay, and it takes us down to Boardroom Officers and Boards. Mr. Dorman?
One item tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 250 S subsection 307b4 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding a pending workers' compensation claim filed by Richard Gregory. It is my opinion that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the City Council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation and/or prosecute or defend any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further, but I just would say, I did appreciate the mayor offering Chief Bradley an opportunity to give us an update. There, we had many of our city departments involved and multiple agencies, too many to, to mention, but appreciate the report from Chief Bradley. We're fortunate to have the quality of people in Payne County area that we have, and we appreciate it very much.
Anything from counsel?
No, sir.
Nope. I've got a couple. Tomorrow morning, Counselor Scott's got radio. Yeah, like already knew, I like that. There we go. And then we're going to talk about this more at the next meeting about water usage, but just a reminder to everyone, we have asked that people adjust their watering schedule so that outdoor watering can be done early, so we have time to refill water towers through the night, so it's all detailed in last Friday's paper, but move your watering back earlier.
As I understand the report this morning, it appears that people are beginning to comply with the request. We've had a little better, a little better response on our towers the last couple of days, so we would encourage people to continue. We appreciate that.
A little bit of change from folks can make, make everything better, so we appreciate it if you've done it. If you haven't, please help out. Okay, any discussion for items coming up? Apparently not, okay. But we're going to reassess the council meeting and go into the S U A meeting, we'll call that to order. First item of business is approval of minutes, July 16th regular meeting and July 30th special meeting.
Do the approval.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Weaver, second by Counselor Pena. And that passes four, zero, and one with Counselor Scott abstaining. Trustees... Trustees, trustees, not counselors, I apologize. Councilor Scott abstaining. Next is Consent Docket. Does anyone want to pull the one item off Consent Docket?
I move approval.
Second.
That passes five to zero. Takes us down to General Orders. Item A under General Orders.
Bill Mills.
Give me a second to pull up this presentation, please. I am Bill Mills with the Water Utilities Department. I'm here to tell you tonight about the Scholarship Place inverted siphon. Briefly in the background, we've got a 21-inch, that's a large diameter sewer line that crosses under Boomer Creek at just south of Scholarship Place. That's near Virginia and Perkins. Behind there's the, there's my cursor, Orange Pride Car Wash, just north of Virginia, Cheetah Copy, O'Reilly Auto Parts, that's behind there. Crosses under the creek, and the crossing is very old. We don't know how old it is. Probably 50 to 70 years old, has settled over the years, and some concrete that was poured either originally or at some time to help protect it from erosion of the creek bank. Actually, now the concrete is weighing on the pipe and making it worse. And we had identified this as needing replacement, and replacement was funded and on the books, but the sewer line didn't wait for us. It cracked early July. Staff identified it. It was cracked and leaking in small amount into the creek. Were able to pump that out and back into the sewer system and put in place a temporary pump, running a hose across the creek. And so we're not using this broken pipe right now, using a temporary pump and hose running across the creek. But we do need to come up with a more permanent solution. So what staff did was put together drawings and specifications and solicit quotes. We ended up getting two quotes for the work. The lower quote was just under $50,000. And you could, at that point, award that quote at just under $50,000. $50,000 is the limit for competitive bidding. But we wanted to have some contingency included in, on top of this $49,000, so that if we get, you know, unexpected conditions when we dig up in the creek, or things go wrong, that we can't anticipate that we're prepared for that. Because that would push it over $50,000, state law requires that in order for you to award a quote at over $50,000, for that the trustees must declare that an emergency exists. I think it's called an immediate emergency, and that would be necessary to avoid the loss of life, substantial damage to property, or damage to the public peace or safety. And since what we have is a temporary hose strung along the creek, you know, any, something goes wrong with one of those fittings, we have a large rain event, which probably a lot of people would like about now, but that could play havoc with the temporary setup we have gone on, let alone the cost of running that diesel pump around the clock and manning it 24 hours. So for those reasons, staff is asking that the trustees declare an immediate emergency and award the, award the contract to urban contractors in the amount of $49,800, and also authorize expenditures of up to $57,000 for the repair of this sewer. And just, there's a photo of the, that's the concrete encasement of the sewer line. Actually, it's two sewer lines there in the siphon. That black mark is kind of the water line, and you can see the crack, a couple of cracks there where it settled and starting to buckle. Any questions?
Is it, is it $57,000 total or $57,000 in addition to the bid?
$57,000 total. Forty-nine, almost, yeah, forty-nine eight for the quote, so that's what we expect to pay. And then the additional, almost $7,500 is contingency that we hope not to have to spend at all. But the total would only be up to $57,270.
That's probably a wise choice.
We need to have anything, do we need to segregate out and declare the emergency on its own?
If you adopt the staff recommendation, you've made a, you've made a finding that there is an emergency in place, and that will allow you to, to award the contract for an amount over $50,000.
Any other questions of staff?
I move we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Hopkins and second by Trustee Scott. That passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Electric Generation Resource Feasibility Analysis.
Thank you, Chairman Dan Blankenship, SUA Director. I'm here this evening to request authorization to enter into a professional service agreement for the performance of an electric generation feasibility analysis. The City of Stillwater and the Stillwater Utilities Authority owns and operates electric generation resources. We own two gas-fired steam units that were built in 1956 and 1959 respectively, and then rebuilt in 1994. So they've got a few years on them. We also own and operate four diesel units that were commissioned in 2003 and 2004 for a total of 35 megawatts of generation capacity. As a point of reference, the system peak year-to-date, we actually set last Wednesday, August 1st, and that was 128 megawatts. So we've got 35 megawatts worth of generation capacity, and this year we hit a peak of 128 megawatts. So we, we, our generation capacity is about a quarter of what our peak is. We hit an all-time peak last August, the 24th, and that was just under 133 megawatts. You ask what are the benefits of owning these resources if we can only generate a portion of what our peak is? Well, under the rate structure that we have with GRDA, we have the capability of purchasing wholesale electric at a lower cost because we own and operate, or are capable of operating these generation assets. What the contract does is allow us to purchase what's called replacement energy. And on replacement energy, when they bill us for that, they don't bill us for the demand component. They only bill us for the energy component, which then in turn allows us to pay a lower average cost per kilowatt hour. The other benefit is that we could potentially use it to shave peak, or peak shave, knock off the peak and lower that. But because of the, the efficiency rating, they're not very efficient because they are much older units, the cost of replacement energy for at least the past several years has been less than operating our own units. So we only operate them for testing purposes. And then last August, we had a call from GRDA, and they asked us to operate, and we did, and we generated for them. Because of the age of the steam units, they are becoming more costly to maintain and less reliable. And in order for us to realize that benefit of ownership, we must have them operational at all times. That's part of the rate structure that we have. Realizing that we have aging units, and in fact, recently, we've had a couple of pieces of the equipment that have gone down, and there are no replacement parts on the shelf. And so what we have to do is we have to have a, basically an engineer come in and evaluate it, design a new part, send it to a manufacturer, the manufacturer builds it, they bring it back and install it for us. It's extensive process. So the staff began to research the concept of replacing those existing steam units with more efficient units that could be brought online more quickly and produce enough electricity to provide sufficient peaking capabilities and reliable backup power. This spring, we met with both OMP and GRDA, the two wholesale power entities in the state, to discuss the concept. GRDA enthusiastically embraced the concept, and we established some dialogue with them. Through that dialogue, we learned that GRDA, at this point in time, is also undertaking a feasibility study of their own generation. And so the potential of adding generation in Stillwater was really an attractive opportunity to GRDA. And so we've continued that dialogue with them. There's, I think, several important factors at this point in time that indicate that it is a good time to consider replacing and potentially adding to the city-owned electric generation. One of them is obviously the diminishing value of our current assets. The other is the fuel market. Coal has been very predominant as the fuel for generating electricity in the United States and across the world for quite a long time. But it is evident that that is changing. Environmental regulations on coal are causing generators to spend a lot of money in updating their plants, and in fact, a number of plants are actually being closed because of it. And also, the cost of gas, natural gas, dropped a couple of years ago, and people thought, well, maybe this is just going to be a short-term thing. Now, people believe that, in the industry, that it's actually going to be a long-term thing. And so much in that a lot of the generators are reevaluating their portfolios, and they're moving towards gas, and in fact, GRDA is one of those. And probably the third factor is our wholesale contract status. As you know, we're kind of on a year-to-year with GRDA. This gives us an opportunity, I think, to work toward, I guess, resolution of that, and see this as being also probably hand-in-hand. The generation, if we partner with GRDA with generation, would also, I think, bring us to resolution on that contract. As far as the benefits of replacing and potentially adding to the city's owned electric generation, it, by, I guess, replacing it and certainly adding to it, it preserves our ability to purchase wholesale power at the lowest available cost. If we did not have generation, we would be paying a higher cost for our electricity. And when we pencil it out at the end of the year, the cost of owning and operating is far less than what we would pay for the additional cost for, for the electricity. The increased reliability, just having that generation capacity here in Stillwater is huge. We had a situation last Monday, which we had a fire east of town, and the fire actually burned part of the transmission lines, or the poles out there. That was pretty minor. We were able to work around that. However, if there was a major event on the national grid, if we don't have the generation resources here in town, we go dark. If we have the generation resources here in town, we keep the lights on. So that reliability and grid independence is huge. And I think the combination of preserving our ability to purchase power at the lowest possible cost, grid independence, and increased reliability really speak to sustainability of the, of the system. And lastly, I think one of the big benefits is the partnership with our electric provider. We take it from a step of being a customer to being a partner, and I think there's some huge advantages to that for the, for the city and for the community. As far as the analysis that's going to, we're proposing to have done is basically a review of the existing generation resources, what they cost, and the remaining useful life, and how that plays into the contractual considerations with the city owning those assets. They'll take a look at our resource needs. They'll do an analysis of the varying sizes and types of generation that are out there and available. They'll also analyze the joint ownership of the new generation resources with GRDA versus sole ownership by the, by the SUA. We really anticipate that the partnership, especially with GRDA's enthusiasm, is the best way to go, but they will evaluate that. They will take a look at the coordination of dispatch analysis and other feasibility analysis with GRDA. We do not have the capability to dispatch this power. We can generate it. We can operate the facility, but when it comes to actually putting that power out on the grid, which may occasionally occur, that's something that we would have to rely upon GRDA and their expertise and their relationships with the Southwest Power Pool. And lastly, they will prepare a report summarizing the findings for a forecast period showing the cost benefits of the potential project and feasibility for SUA's participation. With that, I'd like to recommend that the trustees authorize the SUA Director, myself, to execute a work order under a current engineering contract with Guernsey for the performance of a generation resource feasibility analysis, and authorize expenditures up to $31,350 for the analysis. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions? Do we need a motion for this?
Yes. I would move approval.
I would second.
Thank you.
All right. Motion by Trustee Scott and second by Vice Chair Hopkins.
No choice. What's the no choice?
What?
They're on there, there's a, there was a list, and one of them was no choice. I don't think we ever give, I don't even think we give that option to you.
Yeah, I don't want that option.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
That passes five to zero. Okay, and last, under the general orders, water consumption update.
Trustees and staff. My name is Anthony Daniel. I'm here to talk about the effect the heat is having on our water distribution system. I'll hit on three topics concerning heat and the water distribution system. Current situation facing water customers, actions the City of Stillwater is taking, and city's focus on long-term water infrastructure improvement. Stillwater is blessed to have a significant water reservoir at the core and also plenty of treatment capacity. Several other cities in the state have issued mandatory water rationing for various reasons. Extreme heat and drought are having an effect on our customers. Stillwater uses an average of about 6.5 million gallons per day, but during the summer months, the consumption has gone up to about 12 to 14 million gallons per day. And the primary reason for the significant increase is outdoor irrigation use. The system had trouble keeping the towers full. The towers' level have a direct effect on customers' water pressure. Last Monday, Monday, July 30th, the tower at range of 19 was down to less than one foot around 7:00 in the morning. The tower has a height of about 30, 38 feet, but it dropped to less than one foot. What does it do to the rest of the customers? They all have low water pressure problems, and most affected areas were south of Lake view and west of Western, including city system and parts of the Coop 3 system. And this is a snapshot of the tank level on Monday morning. You can see the dips. The big dip was the one on morning of Monday, July 30th, where combined with irrigation use and domestic use, the tank is not able to make up for the significant demand. This tank is being filled by the pump station along Country Club and Western, and the pump station is not able to keep up with the demand. But after we implemented and asked for some conservation and change in the water irrigation hours, we were able to catch up. I think this morning, we had about 20 feet of water compared to what happened last Monday. The most affected areas, as I said, south of Lakeview and Western Road. Rationing is not requested yet, but we always encourage conservation from our customers. Voluntary strategic usage has been requested instead. The city has begun a public outreach campaign, asking customers to time their water usage so that the towers will- so that the towers will be able as full as possible when customers need it for domestic use. Most affected areas are south of Lakeview and west of Western, including city and Coop Three system. Requested strategic usage. Avoid outside water usage during peak times within two and ten A.M. and between five and eight P.M. in the evening. Reprogram the automatic sprinkler systems to water between eight P.M. and two A.M., although this does not directly affect those living in other parts of the city. Following these guidelines is a good practice that ensures there's plenty of water to go around. Finally, we appreciate our customers' cooperation. Staff will monitor the situation, inform our customers should additional measures become necessary. Staff has used all possible means of communication, the city's website, newspapers, and there'll be a full-page ad taken out next week, YouTube, local TV channel, radio interviews, social media, and so on. Where do we go from here? The long-term focus is to adopt the Guernsey plan for the infrastructure improvements. A financing plan will be brought forth to the trustees. The annual extreme heat and drought appear to be the new norm. Last two to three summers had near-record heat and dryness. The city's distribution system has been really stressed. S U A had adopted the plans for infrastructure improvements recommended by Guernsey early this year. Staff is in process of implementing the first of these improvements. Staff will soon bring forth a financing plan, seeking approvals to how we address this infrastructure improvement so that we will be better prepared next summer, hopefully to some extent. And with that, I'll be able to answer any questions, but let me leave with this message to the trustees. The trustees I trust will understand the extreme heat and the drought having an impact on the water distribution system because of increased water usage, we're skipping water towers from refilling overnight. We're also having significant increase in water line breaks. We average about four to five a week, now we're having about fifteen breaks a week. Staff is working to inform public of the situation and is calling for voluntary strategic water usage. Residents can help by avoiding water, by outside water usage during defined times. Reprogramming water sprinklers will definitely help us all. There's plenty of water to go around, it is matter of getting it to the faucet, that's a challenge right now. With that, I'll be able to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Daniels?
Would rationing help water get to the faucets at this time?
Yes, sir, that'd be the next step. If this voluntary restriction change in the culture, the timing doesn't change, that'll be the next step. There are several cities in Oklahoma that have already done that.
Is there a timeline for this that we're looking at?
We'll continue to monitor, but as I mentioned earlier, the tank levels this morning look good, and a little cooling that's going on right now certainly does help. Obviously, we want to sell as much water as we can.
I prefer to call it water conservation method as opposed to rationing, but hopefully, and again, Anthony, we appreciate your monitoring the situation. I think monitoring it early and ask for the voluntary compliance is far better than having mandatory conservation or rationing, but we will monitor, and if we get to a point that that's necessary, we will immediately inform the public. We really appreciate it.
And the rose by any other name, Mr. Daniel?
I'm, 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 I'm.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us down to adjournment. Is there a motion?
Some move, second.
Motion by Vice Chair, second by Trustee Weaver. I jumped the gun, too. And that passes five to zero, S U A is adjourned. That takes us back to the council meeting and looking for a motion to move into executive session.
Some move, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Council Pena. Council Pena?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That passes five to zero, we are in executive session.